Table, please. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the November, Monday, November 17th at 6:30 PM in the City Council Auditorium at 270 Front Streets, third floor, special meeting to order. Clerk, could you call a roll?
President Laflamme.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Ariaga.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Goff.
Here.
Balakir.
Here.
Pitz.
Here.
Shamski.
Here.
Kushein.
Here.
Labri.
Here.
Pinay Castello.
Yeah.
Eleven present.
Thank you. If everyone could just mute your phones for tonight's event, it'd be appreciated. Oh, I'm gonna get to the departments in one minute. I was just about ready to do that. And department heads on Zoom this evening announces Dr. Ware, and is there anyone else? Unfortunately, they have this presentation on. I can't see if anyone is on Zoom. Okay, we also have the mayor here this evening. Thank you. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chicagoo is recording this meeting and zooming on this meeting. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom audio or videotaping this meeting? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, city clerk, could you call the order or the announcement, please?
Dear President Laflamme, we would like to have the Berry School Building Commission inform the city council on the progress they are making with the Berry School project. They will present the traffic study and the information from the last meeting with the city council. Colliers, project managers, and Kalen and Beaneck will present the materials, and Chris Alisi, chairperson of the commission, will be there to answer questions. Therefore, pursuant to section 13 of the Chicagoo City Charter, I have called a special meeting of the city council to meet on Monday, November 17th at 6:30 in the city hall auditorium, or via Zoom to discuss the following agenda items: public input, update from the chairperson of the Berry School Building Commission, project managers' update, design team update, and traffic study. We appreciate the city council's deliberation and teamwork on this important project. If you have questions, please let me know. Very truly yours, John View, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll start off with Zoom. Is there anyone here for Zoom? I mean, I'm sorry, for public input this evening? Is there anyone for public input? If so, please come to the mic over here.
Hi.
Hi. Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Valcourt, Zatella Drive. The city needs to be more open about how taxpayers' money is being spent and to show it. All costs should be outlined and identified. Financial transparency and accountability are crucial to this project and the taxpayers. The presentation of the Berry School Building Commission only shows three taxpayer costs for the Zatella site: a roundabout, eminent domain property, and additional bussin'. Why aren't all the infrastructure components associated with this site not listed, even if costs are not available yet? The cost of the roundabout on Granby Road is an estimate from the traffic study. In addition, Berry School at Garrity Grove lists $4.1 million to replicate the current playground as is. How is this figure being determined? As President Laflamme effectively conveyed at the last Berry Building Commission meeting to the city council, think of the neighbors. All taxpayers deserve comfort of living space. They need to live their lives too. I ask you to please consider the devastating effects of having the residents on Granby Road, Maisick Drive, Daniel Drive, and Zatella Drive with almost 1,000 vehicles driving directly behind their homes and spilling out onto dangerous Granby Road, losing privacy, safety, peace, security, and their overall well-being due to air pollution, noise, vehicle and light pollution. I believe our voices are not being heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public input?
Richard Valcourt, 47th Zatella Drive. First of all, I want to thank the councilmen and women for your dedicated service. I know it's a thankless job. And for that, we all thank you, Mayor, Sam, and the building committee. You guys, you know, had a large task at hand, but as what Mary Velcourt was talking earlier about the playground, $4.1 million. So I looked at, did some research, like, what will $4.1 million buy you? Well, that's gonna quite, that's gonna buy you one heck of a park. Now, I could use all Gary's there, but, you know, to emphasize these some actives, but that park for one, for $4.1 million will be comparable to Boston's own Martin Park or Springfield's Forest Park. Are we not just replicating or replacing a school playground? What are we doing with that $4.1 million? I think that's a cost that is just being added to the Berry site selection just to inflate the cost, to make Zatella site more attractive. My second point here, the transportation study that's gonna be prepared here tonight or proposed to you, shared with you, I feel is somewhat lacking. It was a limited study that was conducted between Champagne Ave and Edgewood. It failed to take into consideration the traffic on Granby Road east of this proposed or yeah, north of the proposed rotary that would be going in, that would include Zatella and Seminique Ave. It completely fails to take in consideration those roads. Now, the level of service that this, these, this study shows, that there's a very low le- level of service. Look at that when that, those presentations come up. You'll see levels of service of E and D. We gain nothing by putting any type of a, a road infrastructure there, mitigation roadway element there. But then again, you need to get one of those there to put a school road in there because Maisick is at a level F if you were to put in a road or fail to put one of those mitigation measures in. So, please, look at those numbers. This is the city of Chicagoo. Why are we taking a level D or an E for a level of service? Unacceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public input in the audience? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Is there it? Okay.
Great, you broke this. My name is Shane Brooks. I'm actually standing before you as a resident of the Granby Road corridor. I reside at 6 Grandview Street in Chicagoo, Mass. I attended last Thursday's meeting for informational purposes about the proposed roundabout and how that might mitigate traffic and make my particular neighborhood more safe. I don't believe it will. Utilizing the specs that were provided as to the location of the roundabout, Saturday afternoon, in a very light traffic day, I pulled over to the side of the road in front of Champagne. I merged onto the lane to head home, and I was able to achieve a speed of 59 miles per hour as I passed Nelson Street, which I normally would take a left to go to my condo. I have a six-ton pickup truck. I'm responsible as a driver, and I was responsible enough to do it in a light traffic day. But I will tell you, that is a daily occurrence on that curve every single morning and every single afternoon. So the mitigation process of a roundabout, while successful in some other areas, will need to be significantly enhanced with either speed tables or some other speed reduction measure, or this will fail. This fails to protect the neighborhood of Nelson, Mayflower, Beasley Ave, because you can't achieve a significant speed once you leave that roundabout. I implore you to consider that when you look at additional design models. I'm only speaking as a resident now. I'll voice my concerns to the city council when that point arises. But I want you to realize that you can still achieve unsafe speeds on Granby Road, regardless of whether we put a roundabout, speed table, or any other speed restricting device on that street. It is unsafe to travel.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for Zoom? For public input? Is there anyone else on Zoom for public input? I'll take a motion to close public.
Motion to close public.
Motion made a second to close public input. Roll call, please. Denise, can we have roll call?
Yep, President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Balakir.
Yes.
Krampitz.
Yes.
Shamski.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labri.
Yes.
Pinay Castello.
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
Thank you. For tonight's meeting, we will go down A, B, C, I mean, A, B, C, and D. A is done. I just ask if everybody, we're gonna do the whole presentation, take some notes if you could, if you like some notes. This way, we don't lose track of the presentation as they will be putting on the board and going back and forth. Okay, so the first will be done by updating from the chairman of the Berry School Building Commission. If you could. Yeah. If you could, every time you speak, everyone, just give your first name so that the, the recording of it will get the name. First time, the full name. Thank you.
Thank you, President Laflamme.
Could you pull the mics close to you guys, please? Thank you.
Good evening, city council. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Carissa Alisi, and I'm the chair of the ANE Berry Building Commission. In April of 2023, this commission was formed under city ordinance and approved by city council. We were tasked with the responsibility of hiring an owner's project manager and a designer to work with the MSBA to determine the best viable option for the future of Berry School. I'm here this evening to inform you that to date, we have done just that. We've hired Colliers as our OPM and Kalen and Beaneck as our project designer. Both companies have worked tirelessly to put together a variety of design alternatives for the Berry School project. The commission, which is comprised mostly of volunteers from within the city, having backgrounds in construction and education, have spent many hours reviewing all of the design alternatives, as well as supporting data presented to us by our designer. There were many contributing factors that were taken into consideration in our decision, such as cost, the impact of Article 97, land takings, and possible displacement of families, as well as traffic, just to name a few. We worked with our OPM to put together surveys, held public input meetings to listen to residents' concerns, as well as had, conducted a traffic study performed on Granby Road, so we would have this information when making our decision. This was a very difficult decision for the commission. Many of the members are volunteers and residents and taxpayers in this city. So we understand the impact this decision has on the community, as well as the affected neighborhood. I think I can speak for the entire commission when I say that we had the best interest of the students, as well as the best interest of the city at heart when we made our decision last Thursday. To help council better understand how we as a commission came to our decision, our designer, Bert Gardner, from Kalen and Beaneck, is here to present an overview of the information that had been presented to the commission over the past several weeks. At this time, I'd like to turn everything over to our designer, Bert Gardner.
Thank you, Carissa. Thank you, council, for having us this evening. My name is Bert Gardner with Kalen and Beaneck Architects. I'd just like to ask the President Laflamme, you had mentioned the, the order of our presentation tonight. I believe on the agenda, we've got the project manager first. His slides are at the end of the show, and if it's okay, we'd like to keep him there, but if not, we can go to the end and have him begin the presentation.
As I mentioned earlier, I thought we have to follow the agenda. We do.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Meeting law. So if we can go to the A, B, C, and D in that order, then you can go back to speaking, if you could, please.
Yes. So, item B on the agenda is the OPM's report or their update, and I'm just gonna jump to their slides at the end of the presentation and turn it over to Adam DeLassio.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Adam DeLassio. I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. We are the OPM for the Anna Berry School project. So Bert is gonna pull up our overall schedule that I'd like to go over once we get there. I apologize, it's hard to read, but I'm gonna go through it and let you guys know where we are and what's coming up in the future. So where we currently are is in, the MSBA goes by different modules, and so we're in module three, which is the feasibility study. And there's different submissions that we have to submit to the MSBA. The, the first submission that we had was the preliminary design program submission, which is called the PDP. And that was issued back on July 23rd of 2025. And so what that submission was, that was us working with the design team and the commission on all the different design alternatives, site locations, and I think we had 13 different options that were submitted to the MSBA, letting them know the pros and cons of each of those options. From there, we've been working with the commission and with the district on the preferred solution study. And that is, our goal is to kind of weed through those different options and come down to a preferred solution that we could submit to the MSBA. And so that preferred schematic report submission, also known as the PSR, that is where we identify a preferred solution and all the backup that goes along with that to the MSBA. And so that's, that submission is due on December 18th of 2025. From there, we go and we would have a facilities assessment meeting, and that's with the MSBA. And there's two different dates right now we have. We have January 4th of '26 and January 28th of '26. As that comes closer, the MSBA will let us know which meeting date that we're gonna be attending. And what that meeting is, is we meet with the MSBA and a lot of their ed program consultants, the MSBA directors, a, a whole group of folks who wanna ask us questions on why this preferred schematic design is the preferred solution for the city. So we'll, we'll have our presentation that we've already submitted to them. We'll go through that, and that's their opportunity to ask us questions and kind of go through all the back and forth during that meeting. So that would be with the OPM, ourselves, with design team, and members of the district. From there, after that meeting, that facilities assessment committee, then they recommend the preferred solution to the board at the MSBA. And so there's a board meeting that right now we are scheduled for February 25th of 2026. So that would be the meeting that the MSBA accepts our preferred solution, and from there, we move into the schematic design phase, where that's where we really start working into more of the details of that preferred solution. You're not looking at multiple options at that point. You're really focusing in on the one, on the one option. So from, from there, we have our submissions for the schematic design, which is June 25th of 2026. That's when we submit our schematic design report. That's when we'll have an actual, we have a budget, but this is a really detailed budget that then you put together, because you're gonna have, at that time, you're gonna have more details into the project. And the MSBA has a form that you fill out. It's called the 3011 form, and that's where you need to identify all the costs within the project, all the soft costs, all the hard costs, all your consultants' costs, everything is in there, and that's where you develop your total project budget. And so that's gonna include everything from the construction, the consultants, all the furniture and fixture, all the technology, everything kind of from soup to nuts, all the site work. Everything's gonna be included in that, and that's when the MSBA sets your total project budget. And so that meeting then goes to the board, and they're gonna approve at that time the total project budget and the scope of the project in full. And that meeting is set for August 26th of 2026. And so that, again, would be our total project budget and the total scope of the project. And from there, then we move into funding the project. So we have probably the end of 2026 to the beginning of 2027 to develop the, the project more and to work on the funding for that project. And we would, the MSBA gives you 120 days from that August 26th board meeting to, to have funding approved by the city. So that's where we're looking at the end of '26, beginning of '27, to then bring that back to council for the approval of the funding. So those are kind of the, the steps of where we are and what's coming up on the schedule. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer them.
We'll hold, we'll hold out there.
Okay.
To the end, and then you'll be able to go back and forth and answer questions or
Perfect.
Update whatever you want.
Great. So I have one, I have one more slide that I'm gonna go through. This slide here is, oh, I just wanted to bring up, was basically what is the MSBA's policy for a failed vote, just so everybody's aware of that. So again, as I mentioned, we have 120 days from that board meeting to, to get funding for the project. Within that 120 days, again, we're gonna bring that back to the city council for approval. If that is a failed vote, what happens is we have 10 days to go back to the MSBA and give them an explanation why we think that the vote failed, what the, the vote count was, and what our next steps are to try and remedy a positive vote. This 10 days is not a chance to go back and change the scope of the project, to move the projects to a different location. It's really just to see what we can do as far as maybe community support, is city council support to try and gain a positive vote for this project. There's some minor tweaks you can make to the scope, but again, it's not, you, you're not changing locations, you're not doing anything like that, because the MSBA, they have, you know, a lot of schools that are lined up, and for us to change locations, change the scope of the project, you, you're really starting all over again. So even in, we want to highlight, if you look up on the screen, the, the last paragraph of this says that a failed vote likely will result in the school district being required to submit a new statement of interest to the MSBA and await an invitation from the MSBA to enter the eligibility period phase of the MSBA process. So essentially, after that, i- if if the vote is overwhelmingly shut down, the MSBA will most likely look at that and saying, okay, the city's not ready for this project at this point, and we need to start over. And so you would have to submit a new application to the MSBA, and it's not guaranteed that you're gonna get into the next cycle. It's an average of five to seven years for a project to get back into the MSBA program based on previous projects that we've looked up before they get back in with the MSBA for another feasibility study. And the second piece of that is, the MSBA will not fund a second feasibility study, so that feasibility study, if it were to be submitted again for the same school, would have to be funded 100% by the city. So, again, I just wanted to bring that information up, just so everybody's aware of that. And like you said, if there's questions later on, I can certainly answer them.
Okay, now we'll go into design team update.
I'm gonna back up to the beginning of the presentation and turn it over to my colleague, Michael Wolfers, to present the traffic study.
Thank you, Bert. Thank you, council. My name is Michael Wolfers. I'm a traffic engineer with Bowman Consulting Group. And I'll be going through our traffic study here tonight for the Zatella School site and the traffic impact analysis that we conducted. As an overview first, I have here shown the project area that we studied, which included four intersections along Granby Road adjacent to the proposed project site. Those intersections were Edgewood Avenue at Granby Road, Maisick Drive at Granby Road, where the existing Zatella School enters Granby Road, the, the intersection of Sunflower Avenue and Granby Road, and Champagne Avenue at Granby Road. The scope of the study included traffic counts, speed data collection, site distance evaluation, crash history evaluation, operational analysis, all to understand completely the existing conditions of our area of focus. We also performed an operational analysis of the existing condition and the proposed condition, which include trip generation of the proposed site that I'll go through here tonight. For the evaluation, we considered three scenarios: the 2025 existing condition that we'll go through here in this presentation, the future no-build condition in year 2032, and the future 2032 build condition with the proposed site with and without mitigation measures. Traffic counts were collected for three days in September for a typical weekday. September as a whole is an above-average month using the Massachusetts Department of Transportation seasonal adjustment factors. I will note that this study did not adjust the September data. We used the higher volumes to project essentially a worst-case scenario here. Oops. So as I mentioned, in addition to the data collection, to understanding the existing conditions, we performed field observations of the study area intersections. What you see here are some of the key observations that we made. Starting from the top left, one of the key observations operationally were the existing poor operations on Maisick Drive associated with the existing operations of the Zatella School. As I'll get into in a moment, those operations are failing. There are significant backups along Granby, or I'm sorry, along Maisick Drive for traffic trying to exit the school. We also noticed that there are accessibility issues for pedestrians. There are no sidewalks on the east side of Granby Road. Only sidewalks exist on the west side of Granby Road i- in the vicinity of the project. What this resulted in in our observations was that we, we observed pedestrians crossing where there were no crosswalks. We did also note that a crosswalk and a rapid flashing beacon to support that crosswalk has been installed at Champagne Avenue around the year 2022. An overarching observation that we made from a safety and operational perspective was speeding along Granby Road. This is a, an existing safety issue that also has operational impacts. But the data that we collected for those three days in September showed us that while the speed limit posted is 30 miles an hour on Granby Road, the 85th percentile speed is 41 miles per hour. And so the way that we can interpret that as 85th percentile, this is not an outlier speed at 41 miles per hour. This is a speed that's happening very regularly. And so we do observe significant speeding concerns along Granby Road. And this also contributes to safety concerns, which I'll go through in our crash history evaluation. And it also exacerbates operational issues where vehicles exiting particularly Maisick Drive are finding even more of a challenging environment with the speeding that occurs on Granby Road. So having seen the operations firsthand, having collected the data, we then analyzed the operations for traffic along the corridor for the four intersections, and that's what we have shown here. The way that we evaluate and grade these intersections is through level of service, and you'll see this throughout the presentation. This is a grading system that is based on the amount of delay that a vehicle experiences on average. And these evaluations are during the peak hour. So this is a condition that occurs during the morning peak hour, which is roughly from 7:45 to 8:45, and the afternoon peak hour, which is from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Those peaks are associated with the Zatella School operations, not surprisingly. As you can see in this table, the levels of service along Granby Road are level of service A. The side streets at Sunflower Avenue and Champagne Avenue and Edgewood Avenue are levels of service C currently. C to a D, they range. And then notably, as I've mentioned from our observations, Maisick Drive at Granby Road is a level of service F. So this is currently failing, excessive delays, and is in fact at capacity. So there, there is no additional capacity for Maisick Drive at present. The existing crash history was evaluated as part of our safety analysis. We looked at the most recent six years available, going back to 2019. Overall, what we found was that the crashes that were observed in this area aligned with some of the observations that we made in the field. They're predominantly There are predominantly rear end collisions and angle collisions occurring. Which can be commonly associated with speeding, unaccepted stops and difficulty in finding gaps in traffic along Granby Road. We also looked at this data, this crash history. At these locations in the context of the statewide average and the district average. For um, for the highway district, which Chico P is a part of. And what we found was that while we do observe this crash history, we do observe safety. Concerns to be addressed along this corridor. The crash rates that are occurring along Granby Road are below the average for the state. So based on the volume of traffic that's traveling along Granby Road, the crashes. That are, that have occurred along Granby Road are not occurring. At a higher rate than as average for the state. Or than is average for the local highway district. They are below average. So by that virtue alone, the data itself is not pointing to. A exceptional number of crashes happening along this corridor, but there are crashes occurring and there are safety concerns that we were observing. So having fully understood the existing condition, our next step was to. Assess what the project impacts would be. And the first step in understanding that is to project how many additional trips would be generated. Vehicle trips would be generated particularly in the peak hour. When it is most impactful to the operations along Granby Road. Now, to do this, we had three, a three-part exercise. The first part is that. The existing traffic that is generated by the S- Setella School exiting Mason Drive. Would shift away from Mason Drive as that would no longer provide access to the school. The proposed school would have access uh across from Edgewood Avenue. And so the existing trips that the school generates would shift to that road away from Mason Drive, which would become. Purely for the residential access. And so you can see in the table, three different components of project trips. Existing preschool trips, pre-K trips. Proposed pre-K trips. For the expansion and proposed elementary school trips. The trip generation was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Which takes data from sites around the country. To come up with average rates. That you can expect any particular land use to generate. This is standard engineering practice to apply these rates. However, since we do have data for the current Setella School. We also use that to compare it against the projection. That the rates were telling us the existing school would generate. Just to understand if our rates were in fact accurate for the area. What we found was that. The rates produced from the I T E trip generation manual actually projected more trips than are currently occurring. At the Setella School. And so we used the higher estimate, we used the rates from the I T E trip generation manual. Which should be conservatively high for this estimate. So once we have those trips summarized and totaled. We then took them and distributed them through the project area. What you see here is a simple schematic that just isolates the existing Setella School. Uh, trip generation on the left. This is for the morning peak, we'll show the afternoon peak next. And on the right hand side, you have the proposed. And and again, these are just traffic, this is just traffic related to the school. So you can see the existing school driveway, currently fifty four. Vehicles turning left, thirty five vehicles turning right. The proposed school driveway. To the north at Edgewood Avenue, one hundred and forty one vehicles turning left, ninety four vehicles turning right. And we also have production for vehicles inbound as well. Uh, you'll also notice when you compare the left side to the right side here. Mason Drive goes considerably considerably down in terms of traffic volume as. That road now only provides access to the residents. Similarly, in the afternoon uh peak hour, we have fifty two vehicles currently. Uh, turning left from Mason Drive, thirty eight vehicles currently turning right from Mason Drive. Exiting the school. Uh, compared to at the proposed school driveway across from Edgewood Avenue, one hundred and thirty one vehicles turning left and eighty seven vehicles turning right. So that, that is the traffic that gets then layered on top of our existing traffic volumes. For us to be able to understand how this could operate in the future. And so. To, to analyze that, as I mentioned earlier, we have. The twenty twenty five existing condition. Uh, what we have here is presented uh three scenarios of levels of service for the study intersections. The twenty twenty five existing condition. The twenty thirty two no build condition, which includes seven years of background growth on Granby Road. And and I want to point out too that that is a uh. A notable growth, seven, seven years of growth on Granby Road. Um, will make it more difficult in the future for the existing operations at Mason Drive. And that, that actually isn't captured here when you see Mason Drive operating at an F today, operating at an F in the future. It's a worse F in the future because it's already at capacity. And then when you see you go from twenty thirty two no build to twenty thirty two build, Mason Drive. Because that no longer uh serves the school, goes from an F to a C. Which is in line with the other uh intersections along the study corridor. And then notably, if nothing, if there are no mitigations provided, if if the school. Uh, proposed site is only being controlled by a stop sign as the existing school is today. The driveway fails and that is not a surprise. The basic drive existing Setella School fails today. So what this clearly tells us is that uh a traffic solution is required. Uh, to accommodate the uh school driveway. And so for traffic solutions, two options that were viable were were considered. The first option was a single lane roundabout and the second option was. A traffic signal uh which would also include left turn lanes and an exclusive pedestrian phase. And we include those, particularly the exclusive pedestrian phase to really. Be conservative with this analysis. Um, if you have ever used an exclusive pedestrian phase, you know, when you press the button, all traffic stops. And so that obviously can have impacts on traffic overall, so we want to make sure that we're including that in the analysis. To to capture really the the worst case scenario um for the peak hour. The overarching takeaway between both of these options is that the overall levels of service are. Ranging from a C to a D. In the morning and the afternoon peaks, and that is the overall levels of service as an intersection as a whole. Uh, the individual movements you can see shown here uh range from B to E. Uh, the notable E movements would be primarily for the exiting traffic. Along um the proposed driveway. And so those queues are that, and that delay is managed within the site. Um, however, level of service E. Well within the capacity of the intersection. Um, and those focused peaks are really the worst case peaks in the morning and the afternoon associated with the school. Uh, pickup and drop off experienced by the, the school driveway exit. That being said, overall levels of service D and C are certainly well within acceptable ranges. Um, and and don't warrant um. Excessive delays uh being experienced by drivers. Looking at the uh concepts here, uh we we developed preliminary concepts, layouts um using engineering. Um, guidelines and and applying engineering principles, but but very much preliminary. So I want to point out that there are certainly opportunities for refinement here, but we wanted to understand what are the design implications. One thing that you'll notice in both concepts, the roundabout and the traffic signal, is that you can see there's a slight shift to the west. Um, and the reason for that is that. The properties on the east side of Granby Road at the corners of Edgewood Avenue are very close. To the existing roadway. Um, and so in order to. Primarily in order to provide sidewalks, because sidewalks are lacking on the east side of the road and need to connect to the west side. We, we would need to shift Granby Road slightly to the west in both scenarios. Um, and we're doing that, as you can see, by shifting slightly into the site. Um, overall, comparing the two options. The roundabout as a traffic calming measure. Is, is considered the better option for reducing speeding along Granby Road compared to a traffic signal. Um, however, both of the options are operationally viable. And both of the options um would provide new sidewalks on the east side of Granby Road. And provide a new protected crossing for um for people to, from, from the east side. Side of Granby Road to access the school and to to just access the west side of Granby Road. The overall order of magnitude cost estimate for the roundabout was two and a half to three million dollars. Um, and I will also note that the size of the roundabout. Um, we did initial um truck turning tests. Granby Road has truck volume that will need to be able to pass through the roundabout. And so um the size of the roundabout is is being driven primarily by that aid. And you can see even conceptually, there's a a truck apron in the middle. That makes it easier to navigate for trucks. Um, but overall, that size that's shown here is is generally what we would expect to be required to accommodate. The trucks along Granby and then also uh school buses um into and out of the site. This concept is the traffic signal. Um, obviously a much smaller footprint, but still requires some slight shifting to the west for the alignment of Granby Road. To provide sidewalks and crossings on all four approaches. The uh exclusive pedestrian phase I noted would be in place here. Um, to provide protected crossings uh for all approaches. Um, and then new sidewalks again on the east side of Granby Road. Really to provide that, that much uh lacking crossing opportunity where currently. Uh, the closest crosswalk is really quite far south at Champagne Avenue. Obviously, the cost estimate here is a bit lower than the roundabout where. The order of magnitude estimate was one and a half to two million dollars for the signal option. So just to conclude, um existing conditions. We found that there are safety and operational issues that um warrant being addressed. And that there is an opportunity to address these um with the proposed mitigations. Um, that I can, that I just discussed with the roundabout and traffic signal. Ma- Mason Drive has existing backups, level of service F. Um, significant speeding occurs along Granby Road. The crash rates along Granby Road, as I noted, are below average for the state and for the local district, but still. Safety concerns were noted uh and pedestrian accessibility issues. Um, as I discussed in the presentation. Um, for the proposed condition, uh this site access. Would require mitigation, so those, that was the roundabout and the traffic signal. And there is, as I mentioned, an opportunity to address these ex- existing safety issues and improve pedestrian access. Not shown in the, in the LOS table, level of service table. It it captured in that level of service F for the no build condition at Mason Drive. Traffic will continue to grow along Granby Road. Um, and as traffic continues to grow along Granby Road. The current operation for the Setella School at Mason Drive will continue to degrade. Because it will become more and more difficult for traffic to exit. Um, overall, the viable options that we found between the roundabout and the signal were comparable in terms of operations. Uh, we believe the roundabout would have a better um. Solution to speeding concerns and would would do more to slow traffic down along Granby Road. Uh, however, both of the options we found were operationally viable, um while the traffic signal was less costly. And both options will require additional pedestrian infrastructure, no matter what, to connect the east side of Granby Road to the west side of Granby Road. Uh, and with that, I'll hand it over to Bert. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Again, this is Bert Gardner, Kailan Venech Architects speaking. And I just want to give you a quick overview of what the options that were moved from the preliminary design program or the P D P into the P S R. Uh, report, which is our current phase of the study were. At the conclusion of the P D P, we narrowed it down from um a dozen or so options to these four. The first being A two, uh which was an addition renovation to the existing Berry School at Garrity Grove Park. Uh, that project, it projected out, uh we anticipate a move in date for students of fall of twenty thirty. Assuming everything goes well with um the development along the way. Again, similarly, on the Garrity Grove site, we're looking at another fall of twenty thirty moving for design alternative A four, which is a new construction option at Garrity Grove. Um, both A two and A four options allow the students to remain in their classrooms during the construction phase. And um A two is a little bit more complicated because we are doing renovations to the existing building. But the new school would have plenty of classrooms, um it's got more classrooms than the existing school does now. So we can easily move those students into the new, into the new classrooms before the contractor moves to the existing building. Uh, for renovations into demolition, the portions that aren't being retained. Eight four, the school is completely built behind um the existing Berry School with a a decent separation. So that students remain in their classrooms all the way until it's complete. It's new student, once it's completed, the students would move in um into the new school and the contract would shift sides of the site to take down the existing school. And kind of complete the site work. We also looked at an option B four, which was a new Berry School enrollment of three hundred forty students. Um, plus the enrollment from your existing Zatella Early Childhood Center. Uh, we just wanted to look at this option um to make sure people understood um. If there were any benefits to consolidating those two programs, uh the the Setella School is about the same vintage. As the Berry School, so you can kind of project the, it's reaching the end of its life as well. Uh, however, the, the, the cost for consolidating these was just uh too high. And the commission voted uh to drop this from consideration earlier on um at one of their September meetings. So the last option that we looked at was B three, which was a new two-story school at the Zatella Site. It's built behind the existing school on the existing Zatella Field. This is the, this is the option that was ultimately moved forward or recommended as the preferred solution for our preferred schematic uh boat. Or the preferred schematic report, which will be submitted in December. And you can kind of see the target moving date for this option is the fall of twenty twenty nine. It's a year earlier and that's essentially because we're not going through the Article ninety seven process if we move to this location. The total building area is ninety six thousand four hundred sixty one gross square feet for a program area of sixty five thousand three hundred forty eight net square feet. And those two numbers really generate your grossing factor. MSBA caps it at one point five for an elementary school. Uh, so we've got room to, you know, build this out with, you know, structure and mechanical chases and things like that. Uh, we're well below the one point five cap uh with this option. And it's actually one point four eight, it's the lowest that we were able to get in any of the design options. Uh, someone had asked about the cost for the schools. We are waiting for updated costs right now. The the P S R documents for all of the options were submitted to our cost estimator. A couple of weeks ago and we're expecting those results back by um prior to the Thanksgiving holiday and they'll be incorporated into the preferred schematic report. Uh, which is similar with the P D P report. We'll forward to the school department once it's complete, so it can be posted to the, to the school's project website. And if people want to dig into the costs there, they're, they can do so at that time. Uh, all of the cost for these options range from um high ninety millions to the low one hundred millions. Um, I would anticipate based on the P D P estimates. Uh, that this preferred option B three is looking at a total project cost of around a hundred two million dollars. Um, but again, I I need to wait until we get those updated numbers from our cost estimator in about a week. Um, the numbers do include traffic calming solutions. The numbers do include traffic calming solutions, and it does include creating a new access through 562 Granby Road. They also include, thank you, Adam, our project manager just reminded me that the the costs also include demolition of the existing Berry School, because I know that there was early concerns about, you know, neighborhood blight if we we left a vacant building standing that wasn't going to be used. And that would allow the park to be restored and and some of the lost space to the wetlands could be, you know, recreated where the existing building stands once it comes down. So how do we get here? First, the MSBA works, you know, I kind of put the the MSBA's mission statement up here so people understand kind of what, you know, what our job is. We were hired to design your school for you, but there's a lot of a lot of behind-the-scenes work, a lot of analysis is done to to get us to a solution. And a lot of the information, you know, a lot of information is presented to the school building commission, who has to evaluate that, make sense of it, and come up with an ultimate recommendation. So I start just with the MSBA's mission, that the MSBA works in partnerships with cities, towns, regional school districts across the Commonwealth to fund the most educationally appropriate and fiscally responsible solutions to building deficiencies. Kailan Binek is a Chicopee business. We are extremely honored that the that the city and the MSBA's Designer Selection Board entrusted us with this project. We have 70 years of experience in public sector work. That whole time, we've had a focus in educational design. We also have extensive experience working with the MSBA's program. We worked with the previous program until it was kind of shut down and remodeled. And we've been working with the current MSBA program since it reopened up about, was it 15 years ago now? So. And then we also bring some experience working with districts who have encountered Article 97 challenges. None of the schools that we have worked with in the past, we've worked with two other schools that had Article 97 issues, and neither one of those ended up pursuing Article 97 either. And this one, it looks like, isn't isn't going to go down that road with the selection of B3. One of the things about Article 97 is that one of the first steps that you have to do is is performing an alternatives analysis. And this is a study that's done to demonstrate that there are no other options available other than the option that you're proposing to develop a project on parkland. When we had wetlands discovered at the site, that significantly reduced our options for for developing or where we could develop a school on the Garrity Grove land. It pushed everything to the east, and it forced us to have to look at taking four residential properties so that we'd have access on and off the site. That, combined with your Article 97, really drove the design team as part of due diligence in kind of inconsistent with the MSBA's mission to provide educationally and fiscally responsible solutions to do a land use analysis. We had heard coming into the project that Chicopee was land poor, but there wasn't really any information available to us as backup data to support that in our reports that were being turned into into the MSBA. So we we analyzed about 15 different properties within the city. Some of them were privately owned, some of them were were city-owned properties, and presented pros and cons of each of those to not only the school building commission, but also share those with the planning department in town, because they probably got the best handle on on the different land that's available in the city and the issues surrounding it. In the end, it was determined that the Zatella site made the most sense. It was available. It was able to be developed for school purposes, and it was not protected by Article 97 or any environmental restrictions such as the wetlands that we discovered at the Garrity Grove site. And so that's that's really how we ended up with our study, exploring options at both Garrity Grove, which was the initial study and always going to be part of our our design solutions. And, you know, what steps it would take to make that happen. And then we also looked at the Zatella, because that was the really the only other option in town that that made any sense. The the site is still within the Berry Schools catchment area. And again, it was free of a free of a lot of the restrictions that the other properties had. So when you look at the schedules, the schedule analysis for the two options, one is our baseline schedule, which brings us to about a fall move in basically a fall 2029. And that's just based on, the baseline schedule is based on MSBA's modules and just being able to move through them efficiently in, you know, based on averages of what it's it takes other districts to move through these same steps. So we're at the PSR phase now. Adam went through our our submission dates earlier, but we'd be looking at our Schemag design later on in the in the spring. Then we'd move into Module 5 to fund the project, and from there, we would start design development, 60%, 90%, and 100% construction documents, which are considered the detailed design documents. And again, that would allow us to have a contractor on site by December, late late 2027, and substantial completion for the building a couple of years later with a staff and and student move in fall of 2029. On the right-hand side of the of the slide, you can kind of see the Article 97 steps incorporated into that. And a lot of them have quite a long range, and we're also at the mercy of the legislative schedule because Article 97 requires an act of legislature in the state. So when you look at their schedule, you factor in the timing of when we might might be able to get our submissions in and approved. You end up looking at, you know, a move-in date of fall of 2030, assuming everything goes smoothly within the process. But it could be as as late as a winter move, January of 2031. And if things really didn't go well, we'd well, possibly a delay of of the fall of 2031. The reason for that, and it would it would come down really to the school department and what they could they could handle. Meteor moves are very difficult. Although this is a single school, just kind of moving in hold to another building, so that makes it easier. But the number, like, as I mentioned earlier, the number of classrooms is different. So that first year, if you move in kind of in the middle of the year, the building might not get its full utilization, because you may have extra classrooms not being able to start your pre-K program, for instance, until the following fall. But we could certainly get the the bulk of the K to five students into the building. You know, either right after the Christmas break or at one of your other one-week breaks during the year. Those one-week moves are extremely difficult on the district as well, because teachers have to be able to pack up their classrooms, unpack their classrooms, and get them set up for students when they return seven days later. So whenever possible, we really do try to push for a fall move. This would put your final completion, you know, in the summer of 2030 in your reimbursement. And this schedule would be 202031 from the MSBA would be your final. So it's only about five five months difference, it looks like, from MSBA's final reimbursement for the baseline schedule and for the the Article 97. But the big impact is when the kids can move in and start start taking advantage of the educational resources of the new building. Another question that came up was busing, and would there be additional busing needed if we moved to Zatella just because of the traffic volumes and the safety concerns on Granby Road? So we did have Dr. Ware work with their transportation people, and they determined essentially that they would add busing as part of the a move of the Berry School over to the Zatella site. And the additional cost for that would be about 318,780 dollars a year. You can kind of see at the bottom there, the the total buses. Let's see. Maybe maybe it's not there. Oh, up at the top, service daily transportation for too many buses. No, I guess I'm just not, I'm not seeing it. I apologize. But they 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 do add about two buses to each. It added too too many buses and and additional full-size bus as well. So then I kind of summarized the pros and cons of each site for the building commission to take a look at. Both sites are going to require beneficial land acquisition. At Garrity Grove, as I mentioned, we would need to take four residences in order to get traffic on and off of the site and to accommodate the necessary parking for the school. At at Zatella Site, there's still land acquisition, but it's really just to mitigate the traffic concerns and get it off of Mason Drive. As our traffic engineer explained, Mason Drive is already beyond capacity. So so a school solution here, even just for Mason Drive operating seven years from now, needs to look at a different solution than Mason Drive. The land at 562 Granby Road is is vacant right now. I have in parentheses here, I've talked to Mr. Gersky a few times, and and it's been, you know, I I understand his. He's been very cooperative, but his family basically owned a lot of the land that was part of the Zatella site, and this is the last piece essentially that he's got left. So I just put up there that if if at any time they can be recognized throughout the process, it would be nice to do so. He's, like I said, he's been, he hasn't been confrontational or, you know, opposed at all. He's been very cooperative with the with the the school team, allowing access to his site for surveying and whatnot. But that would be the site that we would look at acquiring. Added city cost is 4.1 million at Berry. And again, that's to replicate Garrity Grove Park amenities and to construct a new park. Part of that money, I know there was a question, where does that number come from? We can't just, you know, pick a spot and say that's where the park is going to be. There's going to have to be a lot of back and forth. There's going to be, again, similar to the school project. Studies have to be done to determine the feasibility of various options and to confirm that that they're viable for a park and that the park department here in town is going to be capable of maintaining maintaining it. So it's not just playground equipment for for replicating what we've got over there. At Berry now, there's there's a lot of engineering, a lot of studies that have to be done as part of that that money. Added city cost on the other side is 3.5 million. Again, that's assuming the roundabout solution, because we want to take the conservative, the the most expensive number for a conservative comparison here. Land acquisition, 1.4 million. As I mentioned, it represents taking four homes. And land acquisition at the Zatella sites, about a quarter of a million dollars. Busing at at Berry, no change. Your your existing busing would continue to serve the neighborhoods it does now to bring students to that school. If we move over to Zatella, you're looking at the add of 318,780 annually, because we would be adding buses to to get kids safely from the neighborhoods surrounding the the Granby Road area. Time impact, one-to-one-and-a-half-year extension for the Berry site, and that again is to go through Article 97. And just as a a quick, you know, recap on the Article 97 process and the fact that you begin with an alternatives analysis to demonstrate there are no other solutions. What we found in our analysis for the land use for the school is that there are, in fact, other options available. So Article 97 is not a guarantee. As your Article 97, you're someone who's dealt with Article 97, dealt with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, had discussions with them. It's not a guaranteed process, and, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't let the the city know that. So but assuming everything moves forward with that, and it was supported, you're looking at a year to a year and a half extension. Time impact at Zatella would be no impact. We continue with the MSBA's modules, and we would look at a fall move-in for 2029 in September. Construction escalation, again, is an issue at Berry, and that has to do with the time extension required with the Zatella or with the Article 97 process. At at the Zatella site, the cost estimates that we've received to date are based on the standard Module 5, the the standard MSBA modules and the baseline schedule. And just so people understand how the estimate's done too, our cost estimator projects the cost to the midpoint of construction. So that's where the escalation shows up. If we pushed the the project out, so does the midpoint of construction get pushed pushed out. And inflation is worked into that number. Traffic at the Berry site, Garrity Grove, will will improve. No doubt about it, the people on Holly Street right now would be quite relieved to be able to get out of their driveways in the mornings and the afternoons. We would propose for those solutions that all traffic come into the site from Mason or from Mercedes. And then it it takes falls a one-way pattern with student vehicles or parent vehicles moving behind the school to a drop-off point at the far end of the school, and the buses traveling in front of the school to drop students off there. The back of the school route at Berry will allow 100 cars to queue without backing up onto Mason or Mercedes, I'm sorry. So we don't anticipate any any backup from queued parent vehicles at either site, really. But at the Berry options, they wouldn't see any. And all the traffic leaves through LaGuardia. Over at Zatella, again, we would we'd have plenty of length in the driveways to queue cars for both schools. Again, at the Berry, the new Berry building, the the parent cars would drive around the building. That not only allows them to queue without backing up onto Granby Road, but it also gets them out of the way of the Zatella's parents, who are also trying to drop their students off. And they would follow a similar traffic pattern, but they would turn and drop their students off behind the existing Zatella School. We saw some concerns come up about environmental justice populations. And so we we did look at that, and that's actually part of the MSBA's standard study requirements that we have to look at. So that was information we are we're already familiar with. But the Garrity Grove site at Berry right now supports two environmental justice populations, which are income and minority. And then the neighborhood at the Zatella site supports one environmental justice population, which is income. So there's less than, less, less populations are impacted at Zatella than they would be at Berry by the the construction of a school. Demolition costs at the Berry Elementary School are completely supported by the MSBA's grant, with exception of some of the abatement costs are are considered ineligible under the grant. But in general, they would support taking down the Berry Elementary School in their reimbursement if we performed a project at that site. If we move off of the original school site that was proposed and build the school at Zatella, the MSBA has confirmed for us that they will not, they will not consider any of the demolition cost eligible, which means that the cost to take down that building is 100% on the taxpayers in Chicopee. Going back to the Garrity Grove site, Colliers, the project manager, they work on kind of what's eligible, what's not eligible. It's very early in the process to be able to kind of definitively say that. And and MSBA does not like the the numbers kind of shared as far as eligibility this early in a project. But based on past experience there and anticipating that it'll cost about 7 million dollars more to the city of Chicopee's taxpayers to build at Garrity Grove, because none of the costs for the Article 97 work are are going to be reimbursable under the grant. Whereas over at the Zatella site, even though we would have to pay for the demolition of the Berry School, it still yields the lowest cost for Chicopee's share of the project. And so with that, the project manager and the design team have finished our presentation, and we can open it up to any questions that.
I'm going to start with the mayor. Do you want to say a few words first? Are you all set? Okay, we're going to go, we're going to start with Conser Brooks first. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to go back to the traffic study. And I want to understand, and I think I'm quoting correctly, the existing area of focus and what that incorporates. While I can appreciate the existing area of focus might have been isolated to those very specific four side streets, the area of focus really needs to be Granby Road, because the area of impact is the entirety of Granby Road. So while Edgewood, Mason, Sunflower, and those other champagne are the areas of impact identified by the traffic study, what the traffic study fails to capture is the area of impact on the most affected areas of Granby Road, which is the Grattan Street corridor in the entirety leading up to where the proposed speed mitigation rotary would be placed. And then the remainder of Granby Road, which incorporates the most difficult typography of Granby Road, the downhill incline that only further exacerbates speed on the Granby Road quarter. So while I can respect that it might be an average speed, above average of 41, as opposed to the posted 35, the area of impact is really the entirety of Granby Road, and that I really think needs to be considered. Um, because I think this is only a partial solution to what is a larger and longer standing issue. And while we're speaking about Granby Road, that rotary will also impact the eastbound corridor of Granby Road, because it was indicated as part of the traffics today, there'd be sidewalks installed, installed under the, or along the entirety of the eastern portion of Granby Road. There is a home that is exceedingly close and I know you did reference moving Granby Road over to the west a bit to accommodate. But that may require some additional land takings, because as currently constituted, there is no space for a sidewalk in the eastern portion of Granby Road. So I'd just like to hear your thoughts before I finish with just a couple of quick follow-ups and not to beat a dead horse. But the areas of impact are larger than what was presented via the traffic study this evening.
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to address your questions.
Um, if you address the questions each person, just say your first name, so they're not trying to guess who it is.
Sure, uh, Mike, Michael Wolfrs. Um, may, may I address?
Yeah.
I'm thinking, uh, so I guess I'll unpack a few of these questions. I'll start with the last, um, comment really, which was the sidewalks on the east side of Granby Road and the challenges there. Um, if I might, uh, click back to that concept as a point of reference. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, that was actually absolutely a constraint that we ran into as we were looking at options here uh, for the intersection at Edgewood Avenue and the proposed, uh, site driveway. Um, one thing I'll note, uh, pulling the, um, the roadway slightly to the west and providing those, um, those sidewalks. We, we do actually see an opportunity to make the current, uh, private driveways more usable and, and, and easier to access through this actually. And, and we're, we're showing that here on the southeast corner. Um, those, the driveway that currently exists for that property is right on the corner. Um, and what we've done here is we're, we're showing the opportunity to pull it back slightly um, and allow that access to, um, it continue to exist. Um, slightly further away from the intersection and then also continue through onto Edgewood Avenue the way it does today. Um, so we, we've, we've, we certainly understand there are constraints here and, and have taken some initial, um, uh, thoughts and, and exercises to try and address them. Uh, however, w- we do see that this could actually be, um, an overall, um, improvement for those, um, for those residents on the east side, um, particularly on the southeast corner and, and the northeast corner for that matter, in terms of, of their driveway access. And, and actually with the shift, there, rather than having a roadway kind of right abutting their, their actual um, kitchen window, for example, um, there will be a sidewalk with green space and more of a buffer between their actual living space and the roadway. So, uh, absolutely, it's, the east side is a constraint that we, we would need to work through with both of the concepts, the roundabout and the signal, but, but we do think with some adjustment of the alignment that we, we can get there. Um, I believe there was also, the other primary question was about the scope of the traffic analysis and the intersections that we looked at. Um, you, you are correct, the, the Grattan corridor and the inter- intersection, um, of that street with Grammy Road is not included in this study. Um, the study area was, as you pointed, focused on the immediate vicinity of the site. Um. The, the corridor as a whole, it was not part of the, the, the study. However, um, the, the typical, I would say, scoping process here that we do in tandem with City of Chicopee Planning Department, um, is to look at the area to see where the closest major intersections are and determine if, um, if we need to include them. And as part of that process, um, we determined that the Grattan intersection, which is almost a mile north, about three quarters of a mile north, um, was not relevant to the study area. Um. I, I do understand that there is a concern for just overall increase of traffic on Granby Road itself. Um, and, and to see that impact and, and particularly on the additional intersections to the north that aren't part of this study, um, the, the closest proxy to that and what, what actually is, is likely a very close proxy, particularly for Zatella Drive, um, would be the other in, s- unsignalized neighborhood streets to the south that, that we did evaluate as they serve very similar clusters of residential homes. Um, that, that would be pretty representative to what we did study at those four locations. Um, and, and we do show, um, if I can click back to the uh, proposed condition, just looking at the movements along Granby Road. Um. The, uh, this is actually the wrong one. Um, yes, so this one, um, shows you what is there today, what would be there in the future if nothing is, is built. And the proposed condition in twenty thirty-two, um, with an unmitigated driveway at, um, Edgewood Avenue. And to get a sense of what happens along Granby Road, you can look at the northbound and southbound movements here. And you can see that the, um, I'm sorry, the, the eastbound and westbound movements for the Sunflower Avenue of Granby Road and Champagne Avenue, uh, are in the C to D range. And with the additional traffic on Granby Road in the twenty thirty-two build condition, those stay within a C and D. And so that's telling us that with the additional traffic on Granby Road as a result of the, the expanded school, it's not appreciably different for traffic exiting. What's not captured in these numbers are the effects of the traffic calming. And so this takes a very strict look at the numbers and the numbers of lanes that are proposed and just very quantitative. And what, what is, what is not captured here is, is what happens when traffic slows down on Granby Road for these neighborhood streets and, and the fact that it, it helps the, the traffic that's trying to get out onto Granby Road, get there more easily, because traffic isn't speeding as quickly as it does today. Um, and so, uh, I, I, I know there were quite a few questions and I'm.
There are, and I appreciate the response, but it, it wasn't so much to the Grattan Street side. I, again, I'm more worried about as you get into the more thickly settled neighborhoods. You reference the saturation of homes, Masek, Edgewood, Sunflower. I would argue that there is a far larger saturation of homes off of the Beasley Ave entryway and Nelson entryway into my neighborhood. There are, in fact, there are more houses. I've lived there for twenty-five years, I will tell you. I'd also like to know, and I'm not questioning the efficacy of the traffic calming solutions proposed, but at what point does the efficacy diminish? So is it twenty yards from the end of the, the traffic calming device? Is it thirty yards? Is it forty yards? Those are some of the things that I haven't heard about the speed study. Because again, because of type, the typography of Granby Road, there is an inherent challenge with trying to slow traffic down, because our drivers are inclined to speed as they approach that curve and that hill. The incline lends itself to it. And then the other piece I didn't hear, and I know it was mentioned on Thursday night and I had the benefit that others may not have had, I attended Thursday's meeting. But this concept of vision zero, what were the pedestrian and vehicle involved accidents? W- was that data captured in the traffic study? Cause I didn't hear any reference to that tonight. And I, I'm curious to know, because it is, it is a focal point of this city and this community to try to reduce pedestrian involved accidents in any way possible. And I know that it was mentioned about the zero, vision zero.
By me?
By you, yes, all right. I was going to leave it in generalities, Mayor, but okay, it was mentioned on Thursday evening. So I, I, I guess that those are, again, I, I don't want to get hung up on the traffic study, because I do have other questions related to the project. But this is such a significant safety concern for my neighbors and my neighborhood that it's, it's something about, you know, I know you talked about the scope of your focus. Well, fortunately or unfortunately for me, the scope of my focus is the entirety of Granby Road. So I have to consider all of the impacts, both positive and negative, to the Granby Road quarter versus the benefit that you have, and I don't mean that in a negative way, the benefit that you have of focusing your point, your focus on a very succinct area of Granby Road versus the entirety of Granby Road.
So may I, well, first, I'm, I'm very fortunate to be sitting next to a PE that specializes in traffic engineering. So first I want to just share the, the concept of putting in roundabouts, especially in this particular case, is a calming project. So twenty-four, seven, the impact of a roundabout will be calming down, slowing down traffic as you come, because you have to pay attention as you approach. You're going to, a lot of people will probably come to almost a near stop as they're coming into the roundabout and be, and that in a sense will create natural gaps that allow for other streets to benefit when exiting. You know, what the study focused on were the peak hours. But the impact overall twenty-four, seven is a traffic calming project, which is exactly what the city of Chicopee is interested in. We are right now, we're very fortunate to receive, and I believe Bowman is actually working on the project, a Safe Streets for All grant, looking at a comprehensive approach to the whole entire city. But when you're talking about speed, uh, enhancements in speed as someone's coming down Granby Road, that's inevitable. You're going down a slope, um, traffic calming for those types of scenarios where you're coming around a bend and speeding down a hill. We, we're forgetting that when you're driving a motor vehicle, you are supposed to have complete control of your vehicle at all times. And you're also, there's many hills that exist in the topography of New England and specifically here in Chicopee, that you have to use your brakes. And there aren't speed bumps that can, they're mediate or, or remedy that. Speed bumps will launch you. So that's really not a solution, in my opinion, and I'm sitting next to a PE who studies traffic engineering. But our goal is, and I'll share it, is vision zero. We want to eliminate pedestrian vehicle fatalities in the city of Chicopee. And there are some serious concerns, they're not Chicopee ones, they're national, if not international. That is distracted driving, impaired driving, vehicles are faster than they've ever been, they ride smoother than they've ever been. So the goal is to find creative ways to street diet, uh, reduce and mitigate those high speeds where that used to be the philosophy of DOT. DOT was, let's get you from here to here as quickly as possible. That has changed. The goal now is let's get you there in a timely manner that's safe for everybody. And ultimately, we'd like to see the coexistence of trimodal streets, where we have vehicles, bikes and pedestrians all coexisting safely. And I hope to get there someday, but I think we're a long way away from that. I will say that an enhancement of, in just my opinion, a roundabout on Granby Road will be a significant, uh, enhancement to the safety of our community by creating those, what we'll call them, it's almost their, uh, enhancements of street diet that slow people down. And it will also create those natural gaps to allow other secondary streets that enter onto Granby Road access. And, and hopefully you'll be able to actually pull out of Nelson and take a, a right. Instead of, I'm actually, I'm sorry, take a left, which never is the case. It's very difficult to get off that street. So ideally, I think we're in our best interest moving forward is that we'd like to put a roundabout in. Um, it is cheaper to put in traffic signals, but I'm going to leave that up to the professionals. But it, when we're looking at vision zero, it is community-wide. And, uh, you know, I just want to share one other thought. We're, we are, if you want to see how signals work, you can take a look at the Route twenty Westfield New Elementary School. You can see how a signaled intersection works. If you want to see how a roundabout's working, you can go during peak hours to East Hampton's new, it's a, it's a combination of, I believe, three schools, ele- two elementary and a middle school into one campus. They created one school with a roundabout access onto the main road. It seems to be working very well. And, and I believe in roundabouts, I do believe they work, I do believe they make you pay attention and slow down and the approach and exit of the roundabout. But as for being a mile away from the roundabout and people speeding, that's when enforcement comes in. And that's where we'll focus on if that's the case. If there's an area in Chicopee where people are speeding, I'll tell you, the goal is to reach out to our delegation. The, ultimately, I'd love to see us be able to enforce cameras. And that would make a significant difference to those who speed. And, and again, you're supposed to have complete control of your vehicle at all times. And if there's ever camera enforcement in Massachusetts, like other states, and you can't renew your license or your registration until you pay your fines, you're going to see people slowing down. So ultimately, let's just talk to our delegation about that. And we're focused on, on the new location for Barry School. But I do think enhancements i- in, with a roundabout would be, uh, a significant improvement to the traffic flow on Granby Road. Okay, you want another question, go ahead.
I just had an unrelated question to traffic.
Since you're in your ward, we're going to let you go.
Thank, thank you. Well, I really didn't yield my time. Since we've gotten past my own scientific speed study that I've done. Bert, you referenced project cost yields, but what I didn't hear tonight is what is the actual difference in the project costs? So you, you mentioned that the proposed Zatella location had the highest yield of cost savings. But what comparative to notwithstanding Chapter ninety-seven, what would be the apples to apples comparison? So is it three million dollars cheaper, five million, six million, seven million?
So, so that's the piece, that's the piece that, again, Burke, Arner, Kalinbinik Architects, uh, that's the piece that we really can't quantify at this stage, because we don't have MSBA's feedback on what's eligible and what's not eligible. Um, and they, they really don't like us to put numbers out there that, that people hear and take as gospel at this phase in the project. And we're very early on. I can tell you that an apples to apples comparison we can make is that the least expensive option was the adreno option at Garrity Grove. And this is just total project cost based strictly on the construction estimates. And then we add a consistent, um, factor onto that for your soft costs. That total project cost was, um, ninety-six million dollars and change. The most expensive Barry only option that we looked at, uh, again, total project cost based just on construction cost and with the soft cost added was a hundred four million dollars. So between the least expensive, uh, design alternative that we had and the most expensive design alternative we had, it was eight million dollars, if my math is right. Um, and then, um, but the piece that, that has to get factored into that is the, the, you, Chicopee is very fortunate, they, they've been, uh, uh, you know, awarded from MSBA a maximum reimbursement of eighty percent. I always tell, uh, people I speak to that eighty percent is your maximum before ineligible cost. Your reimbursement is never eighty percent, or it's never what Chick, MSBA says the, the maximum is. So things like, um, how much asbestos are we, are we removing from buildings? Things, you know, in this case, are we building roundabouts, which aren't part of the education, it's not part of the school? That won't be reimbursed. Um, same thing with the demolition of Garrity Grove before at Zatella, that won't be reimbursed. None of the Article ninety-seven costs will be reimbursed, none of the land acquisition costs will be reimbursed. So at this phase, we don't really have the, the, the right tools to be able to give you the answer you're looking for, unfortunately. But I can at least give you what, what the apples to apples range is between the different options. And again, we're expecting updated cost estimates. These are all based on our preliminary design program numbers, which are essentially square foot numbers, because all we, we do is look at, um, different organizations of the floor plan and we try to capture some of the ancillary scope. Um, but each, each phase, our cost estimates get more detailed. So this is our second cost estimate we'll be, we'll be receiving, uh, where I'm expecting it later next week. And it'll be, it'll have updated numbers. Those will be published with the PSR in December. Um, but they'll probably be shared with the School Building Commission when we have them too. Um, it'll, it probably won't be too much before the submission, because it's only, the, the next meeting is December, um, it's eleventh. Um, and we'll have those numbers to present to them on the eleventh for what fourth and, so you can see the apples to apples between these four art design alternatives.
Thank you, I'm all set, Mr. President.
Consular brief.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, question, uh, to, uh,
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, question uh to Clarissa. Being on the Building Commission and being the chairman of it, uh, you're. Uh, responsible for picking the site, the commission itself, I I believe the city council here appropriates the money. Do we get a vote in where it goes, or I think the Building Commission gets that uh sole uh authority?
Under the ordinance, the Building Commission is tasked with making the recommendation on the project to city council. So it's based solely on the recommendation of the Building Commission.
Okay, so the city council will take a vote on where?
The city council only funds.
Fun, yeah, only funds it, so we don't get a vote on where it goes.
No, that's why city council creates the Building Commission and appoints members to the commission to entrust us with that decision.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Counsel Shamsky.
Thank you, uh, there was a lot of information tonight, a lot of my questions were answered, so I appreciate all of your time this evening. So we did talk about the last time. How it was going to cost in terms of busing and transportation and all that, have we looked into redistricting to try and cut cost? For this project, well, not really just for this project, but just in general, because I mean, I saw tonight three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. This year alone, we're spending twelve point six million, last year was twelve point one, I mean, we're going up by half a million to a million every year. This is already put, it's a quarter of a million over that, so I don't know if anyone, if the superintendent can answer that, or if Mayor could answer that, or anyone else.
Yep, um, I can definitely um answer that, I'm Counsel Shamsky, uh, good evening, Dr. Ware Superintendent, and so, no, at this point. Um, uh, my, my, I have made a recommendation, um, and the school committee has not had a conversation about redistricting. Um, especially if we're talking about around the expense of transportation, um, so the short answer is no, um, however, um, with the, with the. Moving forward of this project, um, it is a topic that has to come into play, so my expectation would be that it would eventually. Um, come to the forefront, but at this time, there has been no conversation.
Okay, thank you, and the other question I had was in regards to the electricity and the soft costs that we're going to. Attribute to like demolition, water, electricity, how much is that going to cost? I mean, I know you guys said demolition wasn't reimbursed by M S B A, how much would that cost the taxpayers to level that? Um, school.
So, so the preliminary design program estimates uh carry two million dollars to take down the existing Berry School.
So how much would it cost to install sewer, water, and all of the other soft costs at the Zatella site? Where we would not get reimbursed.
To to install the new, the new services?
Yes.
So it it's going to be similar at Zatella, um, you've got utilities that run through the Zatella site, um, which is a benefit, you've got a. Um, both sites have not been part of the sewer se- water separation, storm, storm sewer separation yet. However, both sites also have separate sewer and storm utilities nearby. Um, and Zatella happens to have some, some storm that runs right through the site, and I think that there's a sanitary that runs north to south through the west portion of the site. Uh, so it's not like we would have to necessarily go all the way out to Granby Road from where the school is to be able to tap into those. So I think that in both options, um, your site costs to bring utilities to the building are going to be similar. And within the site itself, um, whether we're at Berry or whether we're at um Zatella. Those site costs are reimbursable up to a percentage by M S B A, and that would be consistent, I I believe with both projects. It's only when you get off, off the property that it becomes an issue, and that's why, because the the school construction is on one property. And the demolition is off the property on another property, that's why, where we're losing the reimbursement there, and why if we um. If we had consolidated and took down Zatella, uh, that would have been covered by the grant because it would have been on the same property, it's just because we're separating. The the construction activity to two separate sites.
And my last question was a follow-up from the last meeting that we had here. Are we going to look into putting solar panels or any sorts of green electricity on this parcel? Chicopee is part of the PACE program, and this could be an incentive if, depending on how much power we could generate through solar panels or stuff like that. To kind of incentivize the neighbors potentially, or even power that school for free, or at little cost.
So I can, I can tell you that the, a, a project goal, um, that everybody's on board with right now, um, is a net zero school. So we're looking to be able to power that school without any, any cost is the goal, we're looking at geothermal systems for your uh H V A C. And we are looking at, um, we will certainly look into the potential of putting P V fields onto the building and probably on the roof. Um, you've got a municipal power company here in Chicopee, uh, so. The incentives on as automatic as they would be with National Grid or EverSource, but, but we will certainly pursue them and see what kind of incentives would be to. To include P V in the, in the study, but the building's being proposed as an all-electric building, no carbon emissions, and the goal is net zero, so that. Uh, over the life cycle of your building, you're not, you're not paying to operate the, the utilities.
Yeah, I know my logic with that is, I mean, if we can generate enough power not only for that school, but potentially give. Like uh rebates or discounted rates to the surrounding of butter, to the school potentially, who knows if that, then again, if this is, even if it goes here. I mean, to try and make it so it's better for the neighbors and the butter surround that, and yeah, that was, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Counsel Balak here.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thanks for the presentation tonight, all of you, uh, it's a lot of information. Uh, this is an immense project, we're talking vicinity of a hundred million dollars. And uh, I, I think, um, Bert, you kind of broached on a subject area that I'm a little concerned with, and that's, um. Talking about this funding, uh, and getting support for us, especially because of the political change in Washington and in Boston. And uh, I, I'm just really hopeful that we can max, if we can get eighty percent on this, I, I just, I'm just a little worried. And it's just because of the political environment, so I'm hopeful that. We can get everything that we possibly can, because as I said, this is an immense project, it really, really is. So that's, that's a concern that I have because how it would impact our, our taxes on that, thank you.
Any other?
Oh, I just, that was just a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, may I? So I think that's a, a great point to bring up, Counsel Balak here, and one of the things I can share with the viewing audience and for the city council. Is we've actually, uh, you're placed into a lottery, and if you take a look at the M S B A site with up to eighty percent reimbursement for schools, we've taken advantage. Of this program three times, that, uh, and maybe even the fourth time for some capital improvements to some of our school buildings, but three. Chicopee High that are noted, Chicopee High, Chicopee Comp, and the Dupont Middle School, and to uh, talk a little bit about the possibilities in the future of. Redistricting and having neighborhood schools again, that is something I think that's on the table, talking about over the next five-year plan, moving forward with the district. Also, this is, like I had mentioned, it's a lottery, and we've received this wonderful opportunity to build a state-of-the-art. Modern, safe, unique in its own way, neighborhood school. That other communities are on that waiting list to get into, and this is a, a. I'll just share that the chances of us getting eighty percent reimbursement those days, I don't think exist anymore. Conservatively, you can look at other projects in the area, you can take a look at some of them across the entire Commonwealth and reimbursements, some of them are even under fifty percent. But some of them are in the sixty-five, seventy uh percent reimbursement, meaning a hundred million dollar uh project. That burden could be somewhere, and I'm just going to throw this out there uh as a range, from anywhere from fifty million dollars. Uh, uh, to thirty million dollars where the taxpayers are going to be bonding for building this new state-of-the-art elementary school. So this, uh, in my opinion, is this wonderful opportunity to build a new, modern school. Unfortunately, the wetland soils uh really had created some real obstacles when it comes to trying to locate a, a, a school on the. Current site or the Garrity Grove site, and that has really focused and and pushed us into looking into a whole bunch of different options. And I'll say the design professionals have done a tremendous job under the leadership of Clarissa and the Building Commission to try to find what's. Uh, the, the best interest of our community and for our school district and, and for our taxpayers to come up with the best option. And they've flipped over every rock, I can assure you that the city is going to be aggressively looking for. Other means that could help uh with the funding of this project, meaning. Possibilities for uh infrastructure grants, opportunities, I'm not sure if they actually exist because we haven't really dwelled into that yet. But I can say the Safe Streets For All grant that we've received allows us to do some pretty, I think we're allowed at least one very large project. Which could be a multimillion-dollar project, but which again was being selected to be a part of that Safe Streets For All program through the federal government, so. I think that we're going to aggressively be looking for other grants and ways to fund. To take this burden off of the taxpayers, so that's the goal.
Okay, I think.
Can I just add one statement to that, please? Adam D'Alessio with Colliers, uh, so another avenue that we'd be going after is the I R A credits, and so the I R A credits would go. Excuse me, would be going towards a geothermal system, and so those are really considerable at the end of a project, so. Those credits come back to you after the project is complete, the system is up and running, you can verify that, but right now, um. Those are federal grants that are still available for projects like this, and it's advantageous for us to be going after those, it's a considerable amount of money. Um, and those, do you know when those are available until? I want to say like twenty, thirty-five, maybe?
Yeah, even with the, even with the later moving date at the Garrity Grove site, we would still be a, um. You know, they'd still be available.
Correct, and so the, it, and my point in that is that's something we'd be going after, and if this project were to fail. By starting over again, we'd probably lose out on those credits at that point.
Well, that's excellent, gentlemen, uh, no, thank you, no, that's just a concern I have, but that's great, we're going to try to get as much as we can, but just. Based on what's happening out there politically right now, I just, um, I, I, I just hope we can get as best as we can, thank you.
Thank you, I, I'm just going to ask for a couple of questions myself, but before I do, um. The presentation you get to uh this evening on the slides, could we get one for the office, it has to go to the city clerk's office as part of this meeting?
Yep, correct, please. Said that from us, and we'll have that sent in the morning.
And then we'll get one to all city councils to have it too, uh, that's, that's one of the things I want to talk to you. Um, I have a couple of questions is, the neighborhood, um, walking that neighborhood a couple of times, there were residents that were worried about. Traffic coming out in their, the side streets of the back roads, I, I don't know all the back roads back there. Are there any side streets exiting, or is it all going to be on Granby Road?
Uh, Burke Gardner, Kalamunik Architects, all of the traffic, all the school traffic is going to go in and out from Granby Road. There's an emergency access proposed that would come off of Daniel Drive where there's already gated access to the property.
Yeah, I saw that, okay, and I just want to touch a little bit as Counsel Brooks was talking about, I also live off of Granby Road, and that's a treasure, show down that bend. Um, for anybody to coming out of those side streets, but, um, for example, Chicopee Comprehensive High School years ago. A lot of people didn't have cars, uh, younger kids didn't have cars like it is today, everybody has cars, but if you go to there any day of the week, uh, Monday through Friday. The traffic is now from coming out onto Montgomery Street, it's past the four, uh, the uh Granby Road, Montgomery Street, all directions. There, you know, and buses and that, and and uh, we never had that before, and I noticed on Granby Road, you said that, according, and correct me if I'm wrong. It was a hundred and ninety-one taking a left, if you look, I mean, when they come out of school now from Mason uh Drive. Uh, they come out, they come out five, six at a time, they're already backing up even to Columba at the lights. So what Counsel Brooks brought up is correct, it's not just that particular area of Edgewood, uh, and um, Zatella and that. It's the corner, both ends of that because of the fact that, um, I'm, so I'm going to concern, I'm concerned it's going to be just like what's happening on Montgomery Street every day now. Um, and I hope we, we think about that, you know, how we're going to get that, it's nice to get them out of that roundabout, getting them out. But the side streets a little bit, but they're only going to go so far, and it's going to be backed up and backed up, because you go there now, any day, and I'll, I'll be glad to go there. It's backed up sometimes all the way from um, Zatella all the way up, so just something to put in, in as part of it, because it's. It's happening on Granby, on Montgomery Street right now. Uh, another question I have is, uh, oh, we also, we have the slides, but um, I need to copy that. The, the, the left, if you're going a left again, is there going to be, uh, correct me, if there's going to be sidewalks, going to be on. On the other side of the street, the east side, just so far like where Columba is, the bend, and it just stops there? Right, where they're going to have to walk in the road on Columba to make that bend, is that what it shows there?
Yeah.
Alright, Michael Wolfers, Bowman.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm saying Edgewood, it just goes around the corner and that's it, correct? Right there.
Oh, so you're, you're.
You're making the bend, and then you're putting a cross to go across, right?
Go across, correct, yeah, so we're showing that the sidewalk is to connect the crossing of Edgewood Avenue. Uh, and the sidewalk extends, actually, this is zoomed in, um, the full traffic study has a, a wider view of this. The sidewalk extends that we showed and that we included in the cost estimate, um, they go further than what this, um. Along Granby Road than what this uh, uh, current view will capture, I, I will note that, you know, I think the sidewalk extends can be a. A discussion, a point of discussion as well in terms of how much of the east side of Granby Road, um, would. Would benefit from additional sidewalks, however, what we've included in the cost estimate is, is what we think is, is the likely. Most beneficial caption, capture area, which would go south to Sunflower Avenue. Um, to, to allow the neighborhoods that are immediately to the east of the proposed school. To, to be able to walk Granby and get up to the new cross, new crossing at the um, Edgewood.
Right, so you, you mentioned that you, you offset, you can see it's offset there, uh, the line, um, the line of sight. Does that correct the problem, because that's got a little bend, you know, there in that corner, does that help with the line of sight which is required? Because uh, Counselor Brooks and I are the ones who put the sidewalks on by Hank's Variety, and we had a hard time because there was nowhere else. On that whole, all the way from the bridge, all the way to uh Grattan Street, there was nowhere else to put in a line of sight for a sidewalk. Because you have to have a line of sight for so much distance, for the crosswalk, so. Is that going to be, where those crosswalks, is that going to be safe for people, I, I know you got to go, Mayor mentioned you slow down, you have to go around the roundabout. But is that going to be clear, and again, it's only a picture, but they'll be able to see the other side of that roundabout. Uh, when they're, they're going around it, if someone's at that sidewalk, and will those be with lights, do you know?
Right.
Yeah, the beacons, they will be.
At a minimum, I would say they would be, so you, you're asking all the right questions from a design standpoint, so. At a conceptual level, I will say some of these questions are hard to answer, uh, they would need to be fleshed out in a. Uh, what we would call twenty-five percent design where we're really getting into, you know, we have survey, we have utilities, we understand. Um, you know, the topography, so, so I, I will caveat that, um, some of these very specific design questions about the alignment. Um, are, are unable to be answered fully at this time, um, the, the existing sightlines on. On Granby, at the site lo- at the site location, were evaluated as part of the study. And we did not have site distance constraints that were, um, beyond the. The required minimum sightlines for the operating speeds that are currently on Granby Road, and so. The, the, the way that that is evaluated, the, the, the required site distance. That you need is, is really tied directly to the prevailing speeds on the roadway, because the faster the cars are going. The longer it takes them to slow down and hit the brakes in an emergency situation, and so we really. In, in that way, looked at a scenario that, that probably won't exist in the future if a roundabout is though. Would, would not exist if a roundabout is though, because the speeds would be lower approaching this intersection than they would be, um, than, than they are today. Um, and so, I, I, I wouldn't be able to say what the future sightlines will be. Um, because we don't have that specific geometry to assess, um, however, I can say that the existing sightlines. With these existing speeds were not deficient for this location.
Right, I guess, and my final question again about the roundabout, is that going to have, I see for tractor, because we get a lot of tractor trailers going to Westover, a lot. So is that roundabouts going to have the, I don't know what you call it, the bridging for tractor trailers to ride up on, that's extra?
Yeah.
Correct.
It'll have the write-up?
Yep, yep, and so what we, we've tried to illustrate that in the concept there, you can kind of just see a, a gray area around the.
Yeah, around the circle, that's the round, for them, the tractor trailers?
That would be what we would call mountable area.
That we have at the bottom of Montgomery Street, there's a, to go on to Sharon Street, there's a little piece of it there.
Right.
Right, because it looks small for tractor trailers, and that's how they can get around. Right, because it looks small for tractor trailers and that's how they can get around it by going on that.
Yeah.
That's all I need to know. I just want a little bit. Um, and, uh, let me just look at the back of my thing, because I did have one more copies, uh, important thing that we continue to do.
I just wanted to make one quick comment about one of the, um, really important, I'll say, uh, um, questions that you had, and, and that is about the actual pickup and drop-off. And you had mentioned Chickaby Comp, but Chickaby Comp is, is our largest high school that probably houses, uh, close to twelve hundred students. And I don't think it was ever designed. And, and again, I wasn't part of that design process. I was on the Board of Alderman City Council during those years. But that design process, we'd never anticipated that there would be that many parents who are picking up and dropping off uh, like that happens today at all of our elementary schools and all of our middle schools and our two highs, our three high schools. Um, that was never anticipated. I will say that the Zatella, uh, location allows for up to a hundred cars in that queue for drop-off, getting them off the primary road, which is, um, actually designing, uh, in this particular case for those parents who are going to be dropping off their elem-, uh, you know, pre-K to elementary school aged students. And, uh, that design is going to help a lot with the mitigation of traffic. So you're not going to, well, hopefully not going to have a whole bunch of cars sitting idling on Granby Road waiting for pickup, because I, I think the distance is just going to be too far that ideally you're going to be driving onto the campus, picking up or dropping off and then exiting, which I think is going to be a significant improvement to what's actually happening now that currently at Berry. I'm sure it must be quite a scene to watch in the mornings during I, I'd love to hear your, the, the current conditions at Berry, uh, versus what this proposal is.
Counsel, Counselor Leflam, this is Kate Lambert, knows all about that. He's been trying to help me take care of the traffic issues, um, on Holly Street and Connell. And, and Counselor Abrey.
So, okay, so the only last two things is, uh, Counselor Brooks also asked for the, the amount of mu- the monies that's coming due, and I think you said another month or so it's, we should have it. Could you make sure the city council gets a copy of that? It's important that we continue to get this as we represent the, the residents as much as the school department does. Cause, uh, we get to see them more when we're walking the neighborhoods or at the variety stores and that. And the other thing is, um, continues to give us the, not only the funding, the updates that you're going to be getting, whatever you can get us, because these meetings are although we already had through two, I think, or three, we're going to probably have more because it's a lot of taxpayers' money. And there's a lot of neighborhood concerns and we need to keep working and getting out, uh, to, to the residents of what we're doing to be transparent of what we're trying to do and getting knowledge from you folks. And that's why, uh, I thank the mayor for working with me to put this together tonight, so we get more information. But we're going to have many more. It's a long ways away. We have few years. Um, but we want it, we don't want to just let it limbo and not, uh, work on this and keep the residents, uh, in, informed of what, what we know. Because we're getting it every day too, as much as the school department does. So I thank the mayor for helping me to put this, uh, special meeting together. Counsel, we're going to go around the room one more time and then we'll, uh, we'll end it. Counsel Roy.
Yes, um, folks, I don't have any questions for you, but I do want to take the opportunity, uh, to thank you for your professionalism. Uh, your hard work and your diligence on the study. It's not an easy thing and some hard decisions are going to have to be made in the future, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Costello.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Leflam. Uh, in regards to the roundabout in East Hampton, uh, is that a similar road that, um, we have on Granby Road with the amount of traffic and the amount of eighteen-wheelers? And at the time that the school was built with the roundabout and the traffic, was there as much neighborhood opposition as we are facing here? And that's a consideration that we have to take as a city council. Hundred and sixty taxpayers signed a petition. And that's something that we have to take seriously to make sure that their concerns are addressed. And I have a family member, my daughter lives on Zatella Drive. So this is a thing that I'm, I went to a lot of meetings and I'm concerned about this. And I appreciate Counselor Brooks in regards to his advocacy for road safety. Granby Road is horrific as far as traffic. And I believe less than a year ago, sometime in November of two thousand and twenty-four, there was in fact a pedestrian fatality there. So when we designed this street and we compared it to, uh, another street in East Hampton, East Hampton does not have fifty-four thousand people or a Air Force Reserve base or an industrial park right up the street or the amount of traffic. So I'm going to continue to, uh, to advocate to make sure that the safety concerns are met. We realize that we don't want to lose eighty percent reimbursement. But on the other hand, most importantly, public safety, pedestrian safety, safety of our children and our seniors and the peace of mind of our residents have got to be seriously taken into consideration. So my question is, in that roundabout in East Hampton, is it like Granby Road? Did you make a comparison as far as the amount of eighteen-wheelers going on that eighteen, on that, uh, road in East Hampton, the amount of traffic? Has there been a complete study down as far as a comparison to the road in East Hampton, to the road in Chickaby? And what Counselor, uh, Brooks also indicated is that famous Granby Road curve, which is still a problem and has been a problem for centuries. So did you do a comparison? What, where in East Hampton is it?
So this is Bert Gardner, Kalem Munich Architects again speaking. Uh, there was not a comparison between the two roundabouts, um, like a formal study done. And the road, um, is very similar to, to Granby Road in some respects, but it does not have the eighteen-wheeler traffic that, that you're asking about. That's one of the, one of the big differences. Um, but that was off, the school was located, the school entrance was located on a bend. On that bend, there was a side street coming in, so sightlines were horrible at the location.
Where is it exactly?
It's on Park Street. Uh, if you're familiar with where the White Brook Middle School used to be.
Or just a point of information, Counselor. I brought up that as just an example for you to look at. I never said, and just for the record, that we did a comparison with East Hampton Roundabout, because that did not happen. The traffic study has been limited to just Granby Road, just for clarity.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Thank you. I'm, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay. So any other comments from the floor? Any other comments from the floor? I'll take a motion.
Can I have a motion to place on file?
Motion made and second to place on file. This report. We'll call, please.
President Leflam?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Here.
Goff?
Yes.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Kushane?
Yes.
Libri?
Yes.
Piniak Costello?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you again tonight. I'd like to thank you all for coming and giving us some more information. I'll take a motion to. Motion made and second adjourned. Roll call.
President Leflam?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yeah.
Goff?
Yeah.
Balakir?
Yes.
Crampits?
Yes.
Shamsky?
Yes.
Kushane?
Yes.
Libri?
Yes.
Piniak Costello.
And a motion passes. Have a good night.
Shane, can you hold on for a minute?
Yeah.
Are you going to be able to make ordinance on the twenty-four?